Next time I bring you to sit just for a second.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At a executive session prior to this meeting on confidential personal note and privileged information, go ahead and roll call.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mr. Scottum.
Here.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Rigler.
Here.
Okay, on item four of the minutes, we have a motion to the Doc. There's no, is there any presentation or anything, no, and no student report tonight? And, Mr. Barlow, you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to make an amendment to the agenda as following. Section B, personnel following to begin, briefly understanding that Mr. Franks, first, will receive additional security training during her probationary period as best made by the superintendent of the school and the school board Security Committee. Also, in section number nine of the following, to lead, section B, to lead, motion to approve resignation of Mr. Brad Rigler from the school board, number four, Kate Malcolm.
Is there any discussion? All are favored? Opposed? Okay, we're gonna open up the public comment. And our first person is Carrie Melpika.
Amendment, very good people get that correct. Okay, and my apologies, I have to read it from my phone, I didn't have time to actually text me. Okay, alright. I see that breaking order is on the agenda, which is a good thing. After the last heart rating, I've heard of leaks in the computer lab, and we all know that water and electronics do not mix. Gym and other places around the school, so what I have to say is about safety and fixing issues before they become larger, more expensive issues. It may seem like a huge expenditure at the time, okay? But as we all know, many of us are homeowners, that if you start getting those big issues and you don't fix them, they become bigger issues, and bigger issues, and bigger issues, and then they're more expensive. And believe me, as a first-time homeowner, this is something I found out. It may seem like a huge expenditure at the time, but investing in safety is always a good investment, always. And I learned that when I was a teenager. Slips can lead to breaks, and if it is something that should have been fixed, this district is looking at potential lawsuits on top of repairs, and we all know how expensive that can be. The elementary school playground is outdated and could fast become a problem when it comes to safety. Most recently, leaks in the ceiling, has anyone checked for mold? A mold removal is expensive, but not removing it will be expensive to health, and knowing a problem could be, or is there, we'll get this district sued if a child gets sick, and we all know how expensive that is. I'd love to take the time to speak on class sizes, but that's not on here. Priorities on expenditures, like extra security and the legal that comes down from Harrisburg, seem to be a little bit skewed but are understandable. Just, I need you all to remember that school board essentially works for the students. Okay, I question motivations, agendas, and I think by all, we have now figured out it's not necessarily always aligned with students' educational and safety needs, and I imagine at this point, this may be an exercise of utility for me. Until you are all voted out, so surprise me, show me that you care about my son and all the rest of the students. You might not have kids in this district, and this may be a stepping stone to somewhere else for a few of you, but we do, and we are in it for the long haul. If not, I can wait you out.
I'm still Dean Thomas from Fairfield Borough. If the Board isn't aware, at the last meeting on October 20th, they created a video of the audience, and I'd like to know how I can go about getting a copy of that video. And I really appreciate it, after tonight.
I suggest you contact Mr. Rigler.
He didn't do it for the Board? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kitty Hanks from Carroll Valley, I just have some questions, first of all, do we have a letter of resignation? Last time, she said she retired, or she resigned, and we all believed it, I don't say that. Is there a letter?
I'm not gonna answer that, just going.
Good to know, good to know, thank you. I just have some questions, so three of you guys have talked to us and you're not, so Mr. Scottum, let's go with you first. Why did you vote Mr. Matthews into office? Why would we kid on the side of your mouth?
This is public comment, we're not answering.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, I'm sure you have a great plan of means here, and I can't wait to see your educational plan and why you have our students here at Fairfield because it's pretty cool. Have you volunteered to schools? Have any of you guys volunteered to schools, been to the classrooms? Have you been in there, have you volunteered like the stand leader has at the elementary school? Have you been to the play, the sports? Have any of you, I know I've seen some of you faces. And so you've seen the classroom, you know that there are like thirty-plus kids, that's great.
Let's not get back and forth on this.
No, that's good to know, but Jim, you've seen the classroom sizes, and know that there are more than thirteen children per classroom. That's all, and I just can't wait to see that letter, so we know through, because that was the game play for a lot of you guys here.
It will be made public. Sarah Leir.
So, over the last, over the last few months, I think everybody on this Board is certainly seeing how passionate everybody in this room is about this community and about this school. And for that, I am so thankful that I had the opportunity to meet so many new people and that this has brought us together. You guys, everybody on the Board is part of this community too. You need to act like it, there needs to be some communication with us, maybe this isn't the time and the place, give us the time and place where you'll have communication with us. I understand you're not allowed to answer questions about certain official Board things, you are allowed by law to give us your personal thoughts and feelings on the directions and moves through which you think they should go. And as taxpayers, and as a public elected official, we have the right to hear from you. It is our right to hear from you. Senators, Governors, Mayors, everybody talks to us, so apparently you're better than they are, because you're not talking to us. So if you're not going to talk to us, we have to come to our own conclusion. And our own conclusion, based on the majority of Board behavior over the past year, is that you are here strictly to run this school into the ground. And we are not going to stand by and let that happen. So if you want the community's support, if you even care, start talking to us. We can, we are reasonable, loving, caring people. Show us that you are too, but if you're not going to talk to us, we have no way to know that. And there are things that need to be addressed, and you may have walked around the school, but I guarantee you haven't done it lately. Because my daughter's in school with buckets in the ceiling. Do you have buckets in the ceiling in your house with Mr. Prater? Because I don't, I would call a plumber, we'd call somebody and get it fixed. They have the dog buckets in the hallway when it rains, what's gonna happen this winter? Is it gonna have water running down the walls? I understand sometimes it takes time to get things fixed, we've had time, time is up. Fix these things. And quit putting our children at risk, that playground, let's fix it. I wouldn't want my dog, I've seen nicer dog parks than that playground, and you have my children on that playground. If I went somewhere to a public park and found that, we would leave. It's not acceptable, at all, and that's not nurturing, or, you know, sending our children the right message, that they are our future, that we care about them. So, don't move forward, tell us, I'd like to know, after this meeting, tell us a time. Do we need a special meeting to have communication with you? How do we have communication, because many of us wrote in letters, and nobody's gotten responses, how do we have communication with you? Why would you not share with us where your goal is? Thank you.
Stacy Whitmore.
First of all, Mrs. Hanks mentioned the play, and it is this weekend, six-thirty, Alice in Wonderland. She has to walk right through the auditorium with the backstage crew who has done an awesome job with this app. So, also, so excited to see science fair on the agenda. It has been something I spoke about in the past, anything I can do to support that, and support science in this school, in these, all of these schools, please let me know if you need anything from me on that. And I do, actually, I do have a question, curiosity, I've noticed for the past two meetings, there has been, I'm not sure what you'd call it, but private security guards, and maybe they're volunteering at the time, and if they are, thank you very much. But if they are being paid, I have not seen it anywhere on an agenda, so I'm curious as to if they are getting paid, where those funds are coming from, are they district funds, and is that something that gets decided upon in an executive session? Or is that something that the public should be made aware of? Okay, thank you for your time.
Hi, I just wanted to take a minute to personally thank Mr. Hanks for the way that the bomb threat in our school was handled. As a parent, I really appreciated how cautious he was, and not only that, but I've heard a lot of stories in the community about how he took the first of all time to go get materials for teachers and take care of classmates, and I just really thank you for that. It's nice to have a superintendent who really supports our students and our support staff and our teachers first, so, thank you.
April, thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Carroll Valley. I'm happy that you received a resignation tonight from our ex-president, that was the right move for him to make, it was the wrong move for you to support him, last month. As a Christian conservative, I found his views of bigotry and racism disgusting and deplorable, and you stood by him. I find your actions over the last month disgusting and unbefitting of an elected official. You and your family have mocked the concerns of the citizens. You have threatened local businesses, and you continue to ignore the concerns and desires of your constituents. You have not once since elected told us your goals or visions for FASD. You are not holding in-depth conversations before your block voting, which leads me to believe the discussions took place elsewhere. The public, those of us who entrusted you with our children, we entrusted you with our children, have not shown us what your goals and visions are for their future. This community is standing before you time and time again, asking you to act on behalf of our future. Our children are what matter. Not your backdoor deals, not your petty little arguments hiding your face in restaurants. This is our future. I hope from this point forward, without that leader in charge, you will take this seriously and act on behalf of our students. Students first, knights unite.
Maybe. I've seen the attitudes of what James has been dealing with. A great deal the last two or three weeks. I am sorry to see that Mr. Rigger has decided to resign. I think it's a horrible thing that people should go out and dig up three- or four-year stuff and then crucify a man who I really think was trying to do a good job. Now, I am a taxpayer. I do not have kids in school. I don't have kids in school for a long time. But I do like the school. The school is a good school. And I think a lot of the disarray, anger, just shown here by April, that this has got to cease if they want, if you want to have communications, Sarah, then you need to get rid of the attitudes, all of you. They have a racist charge. Is it my time or somebody else's time?
Your time, Brian.
Okay. And so, I would say thank you for doing your job, whether it's hard, and I know it's hard, uh, continue to do your job to the best you can for the school and for the taxpayers. We are all concerned about this, so thank you very much.
Josh Leir.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm actually going to be speaking mostly in positive. Uh, first, as everybody knows, a couple of our local citizens were recently mentioned in an anonymous complaint to the local business, uh, therefore threatening the business. Rather than running in fear, he has offered to do something truly remarkable. He has decided to donate in supplies to all three schools, ten percent of all food sales from the first Wednesday of every month till the end of the school year. He said again, he's going to donate ten percent of total food sales the first Wednesday of every month back to the school, all three schools. Uh, the business is to burn them fifty-four fifty, and I have no doubt that I can count on everybody out there to patronize this local business. I'll see you there. I would also like to see you guys as a board publicly support alternative funding, box tops. Get behind it. Put something out. The box tops, I heard a rumor that middle school are collecting Campbell's Lane, the giant carts, the Target carts. We all know about them, nobody talks about. Get behind it. Put something out. Let everybody know. What does it hurt? They are untapped sources, and I feel that if you guys would get behind with official communications to all the family, every family, we would see it there. I would also like, like before, I would like to personally commend Mr. Hanks for handling the events last week. Uh, this affirms to the entire community that he is truly the right man for this job, and his concern for the students and the employees is without reproach. It has been the talk of the entire community, and everything that I've heard is positive. I personally thank him.
Uh, hi. Excuse me, Mr. BP. I'm speaking.
Excuse me, um, I'm not a toddler. Please, please don't address us as though we're...
Okay, I'm just telling you I'm ready to speak now. Can I go forward or not?
Yeah, so when you, when you recall, it was your time, three minutes to speak. But I'm not, I'm checking on...
I'm asking for your interest, please. Thank you.
Please don't address me as though I'm a child. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so I'm a senior here at, um... Stop, I got it, I promise. A lot of students feel intimidated or scared to talk. And my parents always taught me never to bow down, to close my people. And that is the only reason I am up here right now, okay? I have a three-point-six GPA. I am captain on my soccer team. I have broken school records in track, okay? I have given four years of my life to this community. And after all the anger and frustration that this board has caused me, I think I just feel let down because the people that were put in charge to take care of me and have my best interests in mind are not doing their job. And it really, really hurts. And I say this, and I say this to my peers and the fellow students here. And I'm not asking you to change your views or anything, or who you are as a person, but have their best interests in mind, because that's why you're here.
I am Becky Bicat from Carroll Valley. I'd like to address the school board in general, or rather, a portion of the school board, although you are. I have been attending meetings over the last eight months, and I've been appalled by the behavior of the majority of the school boards. You have the dream team administration here, and you either don't realize it or you don't care. Our three principals, Mr. McDowell, Mrs. Weber, and Mrs. Richwine, are all very individuals. They're invested in the success of our schools and our students. They care about the students as more than a test score. In my opening speech, I have found them to be caring, responsible, and forward-thinking. Ms. Karen Coogler's been an amazing resource to our school. I cried when I found out she was retiring. Those of us with special ed, special education students, will be watching how you position and with whom. Mr. Hanks, our superintendent, I would also like to thank you for your actions last week. I've had the experience of having my children in school under, or myself working under seven separate superintendents over the years. Mr. Hanks has got a skip to our school district, and I'm not exaggerating. You will never see unbecoming behavior from Mr. Hanks. He is invested in our school. He knows and cares about our students. He has a good working relationship with his principals, his staff, and the parents and students. He is physically responsible. I have been watching his budgets since 2008 before we moved here, and I know budgets. Both years of finance and accounting, two years of those in charge of a budget for a West Coast Pioneer with twelve hundred locations. I know budgets. I have never taken a look at one of Mr. Hanks' budgets and said, "What are they doing?" I have found them to be physically conservative and anticipating our goals and needs. I've also done what you have done. I've been in the schools. I've talked to parents, community members, and students. And they have nothing but positive things to say about the labor schools. But what this may mean, Mr. Hanks has earned disrespect from you. But what he faces here on a regular basis is contempt, disrespect, and outright hostility. Some of you behave as if you have a personal vendetta against them, and that is wrong. You may think you're looking physically responsible or conservative. You don't. I'm physically conservative. You're coming across petty and punitive. I have several viewers upset about property assessments that increase taxes, and they increase them a lot for some people. That was Adams County not doing their job. But your behaviors with Mr. Hanks standing outside your home, pulling his mustache, saying, "Yes, raise the property taxes on those taxes." If you have a problem with Adams County, county seat for Adams County, or not, I'll draw you in. Stop taking it out on Mr. Hanks, our school district, and our students.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to address several issues this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Hanks for tampering with the bond threat, and I'd like to reiterate what everybody else said. Um, second of all, I'm curious about the security guards. I know that there was a time lapse, a time lapse from the start of the school year till sometime in October when we finally approved filling a position that would aid in the security of our children. However, for the last two board meetings, it didn't take any time at all to bring two, three, or four security guards into this building. I'm curious why that was, curious how much that cost, because I haven't seen that in any official documentation. Also, curious if this could be something that we can do, this is our routine expenditure. Also, I would like to know, or I'd like to create services from the board, that there's going to be more transparency in filling Mr. Rigger's spot, more so than there was at the last resignation, because that was questionably legal at best. On that note, I would also like Mr. Matthews to step up and do the right thing and resign. It was questionable, it was questionable that he handled it for the next trial. There were questions about rules broken, and Mr. Matthews, you could do the honorable thing and resign, maybe run again in the fall, and you would still be, you would look like the better man. That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Bob Stanley, the mayor of Fairfield. I've spoken before. I think it's extremely important that we have security here. We as mayors have to be with the policeman at all the time. I do think that Dr. Hanks rebonded quite well. I would like to also push for science fairs, return to their school. Had like fifteen years with one of May, Carl Katsu had quite retired. In fact, I would like to thank Dr. Hanks for all the good years of service. As far as our community is concerned, myself, I would like to see him reappointed by board. Thank you.
Lisa Sturgis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Sturgis. For those of you that do not know me, I am, I live in the community. I am a teacher at Fairfield, and full disclosure, I am also president of the Teachers Association. Um, so the same thing I would like to talk to you about how I started this year. Those of you, there weren't very many of us at the first board meeting of the year. Um, I was enthusiastic. I was positive. I was very happy and appreciative for what the board had done for us at the beginning of the year and our administrators. I felt like we had a really great start to the year. I believe that once the budget was settled and all of the discussions about that had stopped, we could have a unified, productive school board. But sadly, this didn't happen. We have a community in turmoil. A board that I don't really think values its constituents and their opinions. And what breaks my heart the most is I think our students, through all of this, are the ones suffering. We aren't focusing on our students. We have students that were playing soccer. They were, it was a fantastic opportunity for everybody in this room the last time to go to a soccer gig and see our girls. But we were here. We were fighting for our education of our young people. I don't think that was what you were charged to do. It's put us in a position as a community to fight for our children and make sure that their education is a positive and productive experience. Just once, I would like to open up a newspaper and see that our students, teachers, administrators are being complimented by the school board. That doesn't happen. Please learn from this lesson and make sure that we don't have this situation in the future. I suggest we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coogler. Uh, we're going to move on to the present agenda. And a motion? Their motion on that? A second? And a discussion? There's no discussion, so we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Barlow? Scott, yes. Matters?
Yes.
Bieber?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Michael? Yes. Sten meters?
Motion, Spirit? Uh, we're going to move on to other action items. We originally were going to appoint policy committee, but we didn't learn about the change of Mr. Rigger until late this evening, and I, I think we should table that. What would the board like to do on that? Would like to table it to, you know, a little more time. Well, I'm, I don't want to take on, as I was kind of put in this spot, unannounced quickly, uh, appointing the people that I haven't had time to think through. I'm sure Brad had it. I'd like to listen next to you. Sure. Okay.
I would say we need to move forward because this was approved last night. Because it was understood that it was a standing committee. It wasn't. So I think we need to move forward and address some issues that need to arise.
Okay. All right, Juan, who would like to chair that? You have, uh, okay, Mr. Bieber and Mrs. Mascado. Okay. Right, yeah, we're just, we're just acquiring who would like to do it, since... We, we, right. What we're doing is trying to find out who would like to do it right now, so.
Mr. Vice President, Mr. Vice President, it's under my understanding that we, I think the last time we had five people on the party to the committee, and we cannot do that because that would justify a court order. We need to have number of the fourth.
I would like to be on this committee.
What do you think, Nancy?
I'm only on the education. Never once been on the committee.
And Mr. Matthews is not in the committee right now, so, uh, so what's, oh?
So here's, here's Mr. Bieber, Mr. Matthews, Mrs. Michael L.,
We have to be the four. Mr. Matthews would be, Mr. Wickham would be chairing, Mrs. Mascado, Mr. Bieber, and Mr. Matthews would be the four. All right, Katie didn't make a motion on forming the committee first.
I'll make a motion before the policy committee.
A second, I'll say.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Scott, yes. Matt, yes. Lefiber, yes. Matthews, yes. Michael, yes. Van Meter, yes. Mr. Wickham.
Okay, and the acquaintance will be, as you know, will be chairing. Mr. Lefiber, Miss Michael, Mr. Matthews. Item D, which will be a motion to approve Mr. Rigler's petition. Right here.
So many.
A second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Scott, yes. Matt, yes. Lefiber, yes. Matthews, yes. Michael, yes. Van Meter, yes. Mr. Wickham.
Miss Carrie. A, other discussion items with the younger property committee?
Other property committee. I'd like to address that we have reported, we're ready for the uniters to get back to the rest of the, also now this is what we need to do as far as the rest of the current quarter. We're still waiting for the parking lot to seal, Mr. Kessler and Skidibery has agreed, may I start striking their parking lot? And sealing their parking lot with David else here, including us in part of that, we can get a better part of the parking lot. I want to address a couple of other things that we called out earlier about some of the leaking leaks and roofs and those things, those parking facilities, why is it done? We just spent over four hundred thousand dollars to replace the roof to fix those leaks that you probably were not aware of, but we did spend that money to do that. We've also spent other money, other capital projects that we've had. So to say that we did not do anything is incorrect. We just, we just finished a roof repair just last month. We've also done upgrades to the maintenance building, over seventeen thousand dollars that just took place last week. So the property committee has reformed and some of the issues that we had here in the school district, the playground, we had a former committee to look at the playground and we reformed with that. And we're talking about the phases. I was, were happy when we had our property building meeting, that the concerned parents that were so concerned about the playground were pleased that came to the meeting. It was advertised. It was advertised that we were going to have that meeting, and we were addressing playground, not no one from the community came to the meeting. No one. I worked too, so I...
Okay, okay, please, we're, let's, we're... We are, we are not going to do that. I'll tell you that right now. We're not doing that. This meeting is going to go on. This meeting is going to go on. Let's talk to, let's talk about the science fair.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit about the science fair. I don't have any revelations and dates and things like that. I understand it is a, certainly a level of interest among many of the students and parents attending our school. And I'll just say that there are times when, as school personnel change and as times change, that it's difficult to reproduce the feeling that the science fair wants that and the success that the science fair wants that. There are also some changes, and so I think we should acknowledge that some changes have taken place. Our, our science teachers are under a lot more pressure in producing results in both the Science P, PSSA, and the Science Keystone that students have to pass in order to graduate. That's the, I'm sure you're aware, the class of 2017. We have moved in many directions with increasing additional science courses, college in the classroom, for example, for students to earn college credit in science in the high school, advanced coursework, and we've also added additional courses to help students indeed pass the biokeystone. We have lots, we've had a lot of success with our spire-thon. We've had some initial success with robotics. We continue to partner with Strawberry Hill. I think we're the only school in Pennsylvania that partners with the National Cancer Institute for Frederick. We are also the only school that sponsored the Godders leadership training that takes place over the last two summers. But I totally get it. Mr. Lefiber asked me to speak a little bit on the science fair, so I know we've been looking at other ways to get a science fair back that students didn't participate in. That's really all I have.
We have one more announcement. On November twelfth at four p.m., the finance committee will not be meeting in place. We'll be having executive session. Other than that... I said on November twelfth at four p.m., the finance committee will not be meeting, and we will be meeting in executive session instead. And so I ask the motions for adjournment. Any questions? No, then we're adjourned. All in favor? Three.